This is a meeting of the Township Committee, April 19th, 2021. The note requirements provided for in the Open Public Meeting Act have been satisfied. Notice that this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Star Ledger, Independent and the Two Per Times by posting at the Middletown Township Municipal Building and filing with the township clerk on January 7th, 2021. Mini-Min Clark.
Here.
Mini-Min Setimbrino.
Here.
Mini-Woman Snell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
Please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Township is holding this meeting pursuant to the rules established by the Open Public Meeting Act. For the purpose of the virtual public meetings during third state of emergency, the meeting is being broadcast live via way of WebEx platform that allows members of the public to participate through their computer or telephone. Written public comments may also be submitted through the Clerk's office at One Kings Highway, Middletown, New Jersey, post 2748, or Town Clerk at MiddletownNJ.org, but will only be read into the record if received before nine a.m. the day of the meeting. If you wish to be heard when public comments are permitted for the hearing of an ordinance or during the general public comment portion of the meeting, please use the raise your hand function on the WebEx platform, and I will call Connie one at a time. Those dialing via phone only, I will open the floor to the phone comments during the public comment sections as well. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and observe a time limit of five minutes unless the comments are part of an ordinance hearing. More information on this process, please contact the Township Clerk at TownClerk@MiddletownNJ.org. At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the true servant worldwide defending our constitutions, freedoms and way of life. Thank you. First item on tonight's agenda, we have certificates of appreciation proclamation. Our first proclamation and certificate is for the Distinguished Citizen of the Year presentation honoring Abe Littenburg. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Littenburg.
Well, good evening, everybody. It's wonderful to see so many faces in this room, faces that I've come to meet along the way, but really to honor an incredible man, right, sitting right next to me, and it's really a privilege to call Abe my friend. And he's been a tremendous colleague, somebody that I've not only grown to admire and look for advice and counsel, but an incredible friend. And for that, Abe, I'll be eternally grateful for everything that you've done for me and for everybody up here on this dais and for everybody in this room. I mean, I look around and I see family and I see friends. You know, I saw Mark and Stephanie more of it. Yeah, from No Limits Cafe, right, to Lunch Break, I saw Glenn Love on there. The impact of you, of Linda, and everyone here is, means more to us, I think, than you both will ever know. And, you know, I called you to tell you, and the day before was the day where all of the NFL former players were all told that they were being inducted into Canton, and I told Abe, I said, "I can't offer you that." But what I do want to let you know is that the Township Committee has decided to honor you as our 2021 Distinguished Citizen of the Year. And Abe, I'm just gonna reach behind you right here, and I'm gonna breathe for just one second because you got a mighty long list of accomplishments here, my friend. And, but most importantly, Linda is up front, I can tell you that, okay? The real brains of the operation.
You've got that right.
Yeah. So this says, "The Township of Middletown Township Committee honors Mr. Abe Littenburg, Distinguished Citizen of the Year, in recognition of supporting small business and beyond. This prestigious award is hereby bestowed upon Abe Littenburg for being a philanthropic community leader and ardent supporter of Middletown businesses, especially during the COVID-19 pandemic. This past year has thrown many small business owners and residents into challenging economic situations, and Abe has made it his mission to help others get back on their feet again. Abe Littenburg is an effective, efficient and compassionate business leader who has spent countless hours helping other businesses, business owners navigate this pandemic, as well as help facilitate a COVID-19 economic recovery plan. He was able to execute this all while ensuring his own Middletown companies, Gutten Plans Frozen Dough and Child's Place, a school he owns with his wife Linda, could adapt to the pandemic and continue to thrive. As Chairman of Middletown Economic Development Committee, Abe supported the Township's Takeout Thursday initiative and small business recovery efforts. With the help of the MEDC and the Linkcroft Village Green Association Board members, Abe created a database of local restaurants to provide an easy way for community members to order meals from their favorite establishments during the lockdown period. As a partner of Gutten Plans, a facility that produces frozen dough for local pharmacies and supermarkets, supermarkets and nationally for Jersey Mike's, Abe has also worked with the Middletown Social Services and local food banks to donate bread to those struggling with financial burdens. Abe and Linda Littenburg have also been recognized for their philanthropic efforts by Lunch Break, and Abe will be accepting the Eastern Monmouth Chamber of Commerce Corporate Good Neighbor Spinnaker on behalf of Gutten Plans in June. The Middletown Township Committee is honored to have this opportunity to recognize my friend, Mr. Abe Littenburg, for his distinguished service and dedicated entrepreneurial and community-minded spirit. His personal and passion and commitment to bettering the lives of those around him is admired and appreciated, and we thank Abe Littenburg for consistently, insistently donating his time, energy and resources to those who are in need and who need it most.
Wow.
We are incredibly fortunate to call him Middletown's, signed on this day by Mayor Tony Perry, my friend. Now the cool stuff. Abe, on behalf of the Township Committee, I'm honored to present this key to the city, to you, the Middletown Township Key. With this along, it opens a couple doors, but not the front door, okay? The new town hall, though, come on in anytime, all right? And obviously, this plaque that states Distinguished Citizen Award presented to Abe Littenburg in recognition of your admirable community service and unwavering support of Middletown's businesses and beyond this April 19th, 2021.
Tony, thank you so much.
Congratulations, my friend.
I am overwhelmed. I mean, this is such an honor, and I want to thank you, Tony, and the Township Committee. And normally these things end with a last but not least, but I want to start with first and foremost, my wife, Linda. Every day, we endeavor to make the best that I can do. And I don't think that I could have done half the things that is dedicated and successful without it. I want to thank all my friends and family. I want to thank all the people that I associate with through Lunch Break. Gwen, that's you, and Jonathan, and Tiola, and everyone else. You mentioned my friends at the No Limits Cafe, Mark and Stephanie. It's the Child's Place School, Doc Pops, Lenny, absolute foundation of that organization and their success in running summer camp in person last year, again this year, running school all year long in person. I'm just blessed to be surrounded by so many right-minded, wonderful people. And all I can say is I'm very, very grateful. Thank you all for coming and thank you for attending virtually. I just want to mention my children, my grandchildren, my friends, the Jorkeys and Kathy and just everyone who's here. I'm so grateful that you're able to attend. And again, I want to thank you, Tony, and the Township Committee for selecting me for this award. Thank you so much.
There's no, there's no person that more quickly answers the phone and immediately takes up a task than Abe Littenburg. And like I started off, everyone up here is blessed to know you, blessed to be able to call you a friend. And Abe Littenburg, you are so more than deserving of this honor, and it's been my honor to be able to help bring that to life. And thanks to the Township Committee. Abe, Linda, thank you for all that you do, seriously.
I take that too.
Yeah, yeah.
With me, Linda.
All right, Linda, come on in.
She can each fold something.
Hold there in case he gets out of line, okay?
Immediately, she made her weather that.
Frank Leiber's not here, so I don't know what's going on.
That's all right. Thank you so much.
Folks, we're gonna go, we're gonna run through just a few more proclamations, and then we're gonna take a three-minute recess and let the festivities begin. Just make sure Abe, you pick up the bill at the end of the night, okay?
First, the proclamations on tonight's agenda are in record only. A proclamation recognizing National Library Week, April 4th through 10th, 2021, attached to Middletown. Proclamation recognizing April 2021 as National Volunteer Month in the Township of Middletown. A proclamation recognizing National Small Business Week, May 2nd through 8th, 2021. Proclamation recognizing Municipal Clerk's Week, May 2nd through the 8th, 2021. Proclamation recognizing May 9th through the 15th, 2021, as Police Week in the Township of Middletown. A proclamation, May 2021, as Mental Health Awareness Month in the Township of Middletown. A proclamation recognizing May 2021 as Older Americans Month in the Township of Middletown. This time, we'll take a three-minute recess.
Motion to take a three-minute recess.
Second.
All favoritists.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for attending very much.
I'm going to resume the agenda at this time. We have public hearing proposed ordinance 2021-3306 and ordinance amending Chapter 465 of the Code of the Township of Middletown addressing parking and traffic regulations near the Ideal Beach.
Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment regarding the proposed ordinance? You can use the raised hand feature. You're good with it, buddy? Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve. Second.
Mini-Min Clark.
Yes.
Mini-Min Setimbrino.
Yes.
Mini-Woman Snell.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes, for a quick comment. I just want to thank the Ideal Beach Community Association. Howie, thank you, my friend. This is a, an ordinance that's going to significantly help the residents of the Ideal Beach community in terms of maneuverability and preventing any type of incidents that are occurring. So I want to thank the Ideal Beach Community Association. I want to thank the residents of Ideal Beach who came out to our off-site location meeting that we had last week, I guess, and I want to thank, or last Tuesday. So I want to thank everyone that attended there and thank them again for their participation. My vote is yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. Our next ordinance for public hearing, 2021-3307, an ordinance implementing voter-approved increase to the annual collection rate of the Middletown Open Space Recreation Flood Plane Protection Farmland and Historic Preservation Trust Fund.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2021-3307, an ordinance implementing the voter-approved increase to the annual collection rate of the Middletown Open Space Recreation Flood Plane Protection Farmland and Historic Preservation Trust Fund? You can use the raised hand feature. This is the Open Space Trust Fund Initiative that was approved by the voters. Howie? Okay. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Mini-Min Clark.
Yes.
Mini-Min Setimbrino.
Yes.
Mini-Woman Snell.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes, just with a quick comment again, I'm sorry. I want to thank, this has been a process that has gone on for several months. I want to thank the 67% of the voters who approved this initiative, who stood very tall and made a very clear statement that the residents here in Middletown want to continue to preserve the 6,000 acres of open space that we already have and add to that. And I want to thank them in this ordinance, and I want to thank this Township Committee for standing up and doing what was right. So my vote is yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading.
Am I throwing you off or no? I had him before, too, just so you know.
2021-3308, an ordinance amending Section 240-18, governing fee schedule for towing operators in the Township of Middletown.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2021-3308, an ordinance amending Section 240-18, the governing fee schedule for towing operators in the Township of Middletown? You can use the raised hand feature. Howie? Okay. Anybody who are joining us virtually? Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Mini-Min Clark.
Yes.
Mini-Min Setimbrino.
Yes.
Mini-Woman Snell.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes, with a comment. No, I'm kidding. Go ahead.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, I'd like to ask the Township Committee to adopt a consent agenda.
Hang on, hang on a minute. We've got 3309, the salary ordinance.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. At this time, we have ordinance 2021-3309, 2021 Salary Ordinance for Public.
Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment on public ordinance number 2021-3309, the 2021 Salary Ordinance? You can use the raised hand feature on Howie's indicating no. Any member of the public joining us virtually? Seeing no members of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Mini-Min Clark.
Yes.
Mini-Min Setimbrino.
Yes.
Mini-Woman Snell.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, we have a consent agenda, which would include Resolutions 21-124 through Resolution 21-135, including bingo round applications.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Mini-Min Clark.
Yes.
Mini-Min Setimbrino.
Yes.
Mini-Woman Snell.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt consent agenda. At this time, we have the Township Committee acting as the ABC issue authority. We have Resolution 21-136, a resolution authorizing a place-to-place transfer, amending Resolution 21-92 Forsaker Enterprise Company, Inc., for license number 1331-44-008.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mini-Min Clark.
Yes.
Mini-Min Setimbrino.
Yes.
Mini-Woman Snell.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt Resolution 21-136. At this time, we have Township Committee comments.
Mini-Min Clark. First, I'd just like to congratulate Abe. Pretty amazing things he's done around town. I'm new to this committee, so I'm just getting to learn how much talent we have in this town outside of the fire department, which was my focus for a long time. And Abe is certainly one of those all-stars, so congratulations. I'd like to thank the Ideal Beach Community Association for having us out the other day. It was my first big off-campus operation, and it was great to see so many people involved in that community. I have a lot of friends that live over in that area, and they, you know, they all have those concerns. It was great to hear everybody talk. It was also great to see the mayor and his, and the team that he put together, you know, execute the plan that they discussed last year. So it's neat to be part of the machine now and get to see how it works from both sides. I was also part of a drill on Sunday with the fire department on one of the coordinators for our LDH strike team. We had a large-scale drill out at Balfour Ferry Terminal on Sunday morning. I'm sure the mayor, deputy mayor, touch on it a little more, but great job, guys and gals, as always. And last but not least, we have a brick initiative going on right now and other assorted things for the 9/11 Memorial Foundation. If anybody is looking to buy bricks, there's websites, there's a Facebook page, there is online ordering available. Anything you need, contact the, contact us or go on Facebook, and you can find it. Yep, we've got the, PD has patches for sale. It's kind of hard to see on the video, but we have all sorts of neat initiatives. Committee Woman Snell is heading up that initiative, and I'm sure she'll talk about it a little more. That's all I got.
Thank you, Committee Woman Setimbrino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One item, I have one on for this evening. I don't want to reveal this to everyone here and everyone in the audience. Before tonight's meeting, the mayor made me a bet. And he said, "I'm gonna bet you tonight that more than 25 people attend the audience." I thought for a moment, I took a look at the agenda, and I saw Abe Littenburg was on for Citizen of the Year. I didn't take the bet. So I want to congratulate.
It would have been the easiest $2 I ever won.
It would have been. So Abe's a great gentleman, a great asset to the community of Middletown. We're lucky to have him. We're lucky to have his businesses in town, his expertise, and his leadership in the Township of Middletown. It certainly continues to make Middletown one of the greatest places to live, work and raise a family. So to that, Abe, congratulations on your Citizen of the Year this evening, and many more to come. And that's all I have for this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Committee Woman Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, too, would like to congratulate Abe. I've known Abe for decades, and I really don't know of a more generous and compassionate person. And I think Middletown is very lucky to have him. So congratulations to Abe. Secondly, I'm thrilled to hear that our kids are gonna be back in school full-time as of May 10th. I hope that continues, and I hope to see them all back on May 10th. I know they probably are all looking forward to it, to see their friends, and at least get back to something a little bit normal for our kids who have really suffered through this pandemic. I will update everybody on our fundraising campaign for the 20th anniversary of the 9/11 ceremony. Countdown is on for purchasing a brick because we need to have time to lay them on the walkway. So if you haven't purchased one yet, feel free to go to the website, which I'll say at the end, and do it quickly. Time is running out on that. The lawn signs have become very popular and are selling very quickly. You'll be notified by email when to pick them up here at Town Hall. And we're now working on personalized commemorative banners, and you'll be able to keep them after they're hanging along Kings Highway and Church Street. So feel free to order one of them as well. And for these and other sponsorships, you can go to the website, which is www.middletownremembers.com or .org. We have both. So feel free to go online and order... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. She just corrected me. Thank you, Tara. www.middletownremembers911.com or .org. But there's plenty of sponsorships and different possibilities for donations anybody can make, so feel free to go on and do your thing. So I think that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Committee Woman Snell. Deputy Mayor. We almost had him tonight, Heidi. I slipped a different agenda in there for him.
He put last, last meeting's agenda in front of me, so I'm looking at it, and I'm like, this is not right.
I have the same one.
So I just wanted to say congratulations to Abe. I got the benefit to work with him this year. Fabulous job, what a worker. So thank you, Abe. I know you're gone here now, but thank you very much. I also want to make sure we didn't do a last meeting. I wanted to thank Congressman Smith and Commissioner Director Tom Arnon in setting up an amazing meeting with the Coast Guard to talk about the Oceanic Bridge, and hopefully we can come to some kind of conclusion with that, with the, you know, potential height issues on that. So thank you, everyone involved in that. I want to thank Chief Freeman for having us out there on Sunday. It's really, I always say a lot about the fire department, but there's 50-plus volunteers out there. I know it's Volunteer Month here, just, just amazing. With everything going on, there's 50 people out there working for three, four hours, packing up. How much hose are Ryan?
He put out 4,000, 4,000 feet.
4,000 feet of hose. If anyone knows how long that takes, but that's every bit of two to three hours of work just to clean it up. But I heard they got some new handy-dandy tool that works a lot better, so. But thank you, Chief Freeman, and your leadership there. So that's all I have, Mayor. All right, thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Appreciate the humor of sticking last meeting's agenda in my face, so I look, try and look like an idiot up here. Abe Littenburg, I've said enough. The man is just an incredible asset to Middletown, and we're so grateful. Howie, I want to thank you, man. Our lone, our lone warrior out there. So, but Abe Littenburg is an incredible asset to Middletown and incredible asset to the business community. I was fortunate enough to win the Spinnaker Award last year, and, yeah, last year. And, and to see him now earn the Good Neighbor Award is something to be incredibly proud of, and I look forward to celebrating with him in June. The Middletown Open Space Initiative, I've talked more about this than, than I think any other subject before, but it's something that I'm incredibly proud of, and I know this Township Committee is incredibly proud of. And 67% of people who voted in favor of this, this is now, now the official policy of the town. It is set into stone, and, and we're just grateful that we're gonna have this opportunity to preserve more open space, to make the necessary upgrades for our recreational facilities and our historic farmlands all across town. So once again, this is the last time, but thank you to the Township Committee for stepping up and making that a possibility. Again, Ideal Beach Community, thank you very much for your efforts. You know, Holly and Holly Morgan and all her officers and all the residents that turned out the other night to hear the plans that the Township Committee was taking forward and to ensure that safety, security, and the overall quality of life and well-being for all the residents that live out there was known to them that it is a top priority for myself and for this Township Committee. So I want to thank them all very much. I want to, you know, we proclaim tonight, mental health, one of the awareness months was Mental Health Awareness Month. And I was reached out to by Nicole Valenti, who lives in Linkcroft, and we invited her here tonight, but she's actually a student. here tonight, but she's actually a student at Montclair State. She's a graduate student, and she had class, unfortunately, so she couldn't make it here tonight. But she's working towards her master's degree in counseling. And I want to thank her for reaching out to me, to my office, to raise awareness for mental health. You know, all of us, every single person in this room, every single person joining us, has gone through a lot over these last 15 or so months. And it's incredibly important for all of us to take a pause and take a deep breath and to ensure that our loved ones, our friends, our family are all doing okay, knowing the restrictions that are being placed on us. But I'm hopeful that those restrictions are going to come to an end soon, now that vaccines have become available to anyone that wishes to receive them. So Chief Friedman, Chief Chenoweth, Chief Kane, Chief Fosse Netti, I want to thank them, everybody, all the 50 volunteers that came out for our LDH drill at the Belfort Ferry Terminal yesterday. Incredibly important and so impressive and so well-known. And I know the two gentlemen to my right can speak better of this than I can, but it says something when the county fire marshal comes out and watches us do our work, because the Middletown Fire Department has perfected it and continues, knows that there's constantly things that we can do to improve and get better. Equipment changes, community had their brand-new fire truck out there yesterday, and the changes that occur just from that, the system itself that they were teaching me about, you know, it's constantly changing as our apparatus gets upgraded and our equipment gets upgraded. So to watch them in action, after last year, I think we only had one LDH drill, to be back out there and see them back at what they do best, and showing the county fire marshal how we do it here in Middletown is much appreciated and great to see. So I think I'm done. With that being said, is that fast enough for your rec?
It was pretty good.
Okay. With that being said, I'll open it up for Township Committee for a public comment. Again, you can use the raised hand feature if you'd like to make a public comment. Heidi will unmute your line if you use that raised hand feature, which is along the right-hand side of your screen. But before I go to the virtual and let anybody that would like to speak virtually, Howie, you got anything, buddy?
Two minutes.
Come on down, then. How amazing is it that somebody's walking towards the, isn't that nice?
I'm at 61 Ocean Avenue, North Middletown, trustee for the Ideal Beach Community Association. Now, they may be surprised, I didn't know I was showing up here, but I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for taking the time out of your busy schedules to come over and do what you did for the Ideal Beach community. Last year was a bit horrific, especially down on Bayside Parkway. A lot of people were concerned about that. So with the, with you guys, this is why I don't want to get up, starting early to mark the curves and to show the people what you're going to do, it shows us over there that you guys are really helping us, and I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, because it means a lot to me. I'm there 43 years, and I just, I appreciate what you guys are doing. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Appreciate all your leadership over there. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? You can use the raised hand feature. We do have one call? It's Kristen. It's by Kristen. No. Tara, for me.
Do you want to make a comment?
Yes, hi, Tara Fleming, 49, Brandi Wyandeway. Hello, everyone. Thank you to the committee, as usual, for their service to the community. I just had a question about this on the agenda about, I didn't understand what it means about resolution rejecting proposals about marketing of antifreeze and so forth. What is that all about?
I mean, one of you can talk if you want to go, but for bid proposals, we have the ability to reject any proposals that come in. And I think Ted is on the line, Ted wants to talk. You want to go? Go ahead.
The township that its recycling convenience centers, which is Kane's Lane, for this type of material, accepts waste materials, waste oils, things of that nature. And so we have to either pay to dispose of this material, but there's also actually a marketplace for this material to try to sell it and get some consideration for it. So the township sought bids to see, you know, if there was any marketplace for these materials. Some of the materials, there was a marketplace for, some there was not. The market for a lot of recyclable materials right now is not excellent, so the, you know, in which the township will dispose of this material, you know, will be determined later, either through the marketplace or the township delivering it itself. So these were, you know, just some bids for those certain materials and products that are collected for recycling purposes that were rejected.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tara. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve, and adjourn. Second.
Minuteman Clark.
Yes.
Minuteman Setimino.
Yes.
Committeewoman Snell.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adjourn.